As the Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present. Can you hear me? School community members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Okay, um, I know that we do not have student representatives tonight. Um, I believe. We do. Oh, we do? Oh, okay. I thought they mentioned at our SAC meeting that, that Kaylee.
Kaylee, Kaylee is on.
Oh, Kaylee, you are here. Okay. Well, hi, can you hear me okay? Ah, okay. All right. I was all ready to kind of take over, but I realized the weather maybe put a damper in some of you guys' plans. Okay. Um, so Kaylee, thank you for, for joining then. Uh, staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Colleen Androtti?
Here.
Brian Haas?
Yes.
Chuck Karajanis?
Yes.
Wayne White?
Yeah.
Um, and we have, is anyone else from staff? Nope. Okay. Um, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee and our budget hearing is being conducted remotely as allowed by Chapter Two of the Act of 2023, signed into law by Governor Healey on March 29th, 2023. This act continues to exempt certain provisions under the open meeting law required regarding remote meetings and public access until March 31st, 2025. This committee is convening via Zoom as posted on the district's website while, um, let's see, this meeting will, uh, oh, while an option for remote meeting is being provided as a courtesy, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast um, to remote attendees unless otherwise required by law. And just as a caveat, um, if there's technology issues during our public hearing, we will have to probably reschedule that. So that would be the only exemption to that. Please note that this meeting is being recorded accordingly. Be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. If you're planning to record or broadcast this meeting, please use the raise your hand function now. And I don't see anyone there. Um, along with the agenda, most of tonight's meeting materials are available on the Maynard Public School website under, um, in the folder titled 2023, 2024 Agendas, under the tab School Committee. Also, um, for awareness, because again, this is a, a public hearing, the budget information for FY25 has been posted on, under the, under, um, on the school's website as well. For reference, public comments is devoted time for the school committee to hear from the public. As such, its structured primary supports a unidirectional recording of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Here are the general rules of public comments. Any person wishing to speak and make a comment during the meeting um, can sign up using the link provided on the agenda to speak in advance. Please have your name, your Zoom name match so that we can unmute you to speak. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard. No person may comment more than once without permission of the Chair. As time allows, a Chair could consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if it's related to a topic that has not yet been brought up. Any person wishing to submit comments in writing to be read may do so by emailing in advance comments for SCmeeting@maynard.k12.ma.us. You must indicate public comment in the subject line and include your first, last name and your town to ensure your comment can be read. Comments, uh, will only be read for three minutes. If the submitted comments are longer, they will generally, um, be suspended at the three-minute mark. To ensure all comments can be read in their entirety, it is suggested that you keep them to approximately 350 words. However, comments submitted longer will be included to the, um, in the public record in their entirety. Anyone who wishes to send a comment after the meeting um, can do so, or after the agenda item has passed, can do so by submitting or emailing comments for SCmeeting@maynard.k12.ma.us up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating that their comment to be, additional comments to be included. So for additional, some ground rules, I'll introduce a speaker on the agenda. After they conclude the remarks, I will ask each member if they have any additional comments, questions. I will go through the members for um, additional comments or question of time allows. Please hold speaking until your name is called or remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the Chair and take care not to interrupt anyone who is speaking. Finally, each vote taken is, this meeting will be conducted via a roll call vote. So, um, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order via roll call. Mary Branley?
Here.
Mara Hogan?
Here.
Elizabeth Albota?
Here.
Hillary Griffiths?
Here.
And Natasha Rivera. Yes. Okay. And now, I already lost my agenda. Hold it go. Um, so now, it's 7:8. We'll go ahead, actually, need to open, um, the hearing. So we're going to open the public hearing in accordance with MGL Chapter 71, um, Section 38N. So I'm going to do another uh, roll call to open the hearing. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera? Yes. Okay. Um, I'm going to, Brian, turn it over to you to discuss our budget again, and we can go from there.
Great. Thanks very much. Um, it's great to see so many people here tonight. We've worked really hard on our FY25 budget from early on this past fall, um, with the school committee's support, with the leadership team's support, working with the town as well. Um, it's, we're the largest department in the town. We're one, but we're one department in, in the town. So you can see, Colleen, are you going to share and run the slides? I know you are. Thanks. And so one of the important things is that, um, we really look at our district priorities. We want to advance best practices, and we want to align our resources to make them sustainable and what's in the best interest of students and staff. And that's really been our focus. Um, so the next slide talks about our major initiatives, and they're not new. They're our district improvement pieces. Um, we focus primarily on obviously curriculum, social, emotional, and student services. Those have been three big areas, and you'll see that's primarily where a major portion of the money goes to um, literacy curriculum, math curriculum assessments, et cetera. Um, social, emotional in terms of mental health first aid, maintaining our schooling, school counseling staff members, um, and integrating social, emotional learning curriculum into the schools. And student services covers a wide variety there, everything from maintaining a fourth nurse to continuing in district support of students um, with specific needs to reduce our out-of-district costs and a host of other things. Colleen is going to go to the next slide for me. Thanks. Um, and this is a slide which has, shows our, okay, go back one, please. There we go. She's testing me. I appreciate that.
She was like, you're too slow.
I know. I need to get it going. We've done this a lot of times, but I think there are people on at the, at the meeting who may not have seen it each and every time. So this just shows historically, the green bar is what I would say is our level service and what we've spent year to year. And you can see that the blue bar is what was allocated from the town. So every year from FY20, we've spent a little bit more. In some years, it's been a little bit easier because we've had an increase in grants. Other years, we've had to use our revolvers, and as you see, every year that gap grows. And by FY25, that is not a sustainable gap. So we had to really go back to our budget and really maintain, stick with our priorities, priorities, but really zero in on what do we have to keep? And how much of our revolvers can we use? And we'll talk about that a little bit later. But you can see that gap for FY25 between the blue and the, the green is substantial. Now, now you can go to the next slide. I see you just having so much fun tonight. So a topic that comes up quite often, which it does for, I think, most schools is how much do you spend or do you spend enough on maintenance? You know, we have lots of buildings. They're municipal buildings. Um, and right now we have two really, really beautiful buildings and one building that, um, we just needed to last a couple of more years because luckily the town supported uh, the Green Meadow Building Project, and we are in design development for a new building. But this shows from FY19 all the way to FY23 that we really, in fact, have spent money um, on year after year, whether it's in the hundreds of, you know, 160,000, 180, 275, $300,000, whatever that number is. Um, we have contributed money to maintain our buildings and grounds. So just to put that to rest, and they're buildings. They're kind of like your house. So one of the things you see on there are capital roof repairs. Like your house, roofs only last so long. Furnaces only last so long. So those are normal things. Wear and tear on a building like wear and tear on your house. So we in fact do maintain those. Some of these are big projects, so you'll see we go back to the town for, and ask for capital money because they're larger projects than a school budget can absorb. Thanks. Now we get to the slide that really spells out the options. And when we started the budget process, we were kind of, we were at the enhanced level service budget. I was pretty excited with that. As Superintendent, I should be excited with that. That's everything we want. It includes what we're currently doing. It adds a couple of things that we think are really important. But we also know it was a big ask. Um, and if you've been watching the news lately across the state, many, many towns are looking at overrides this year just to maintain. And without those, they're looking at significant cuts, right? So we worked with the town. We worked with our leadership team. We went back and said, okay, so if we can't have as much as we're asking for the 24,1, 24,101,656, um, what would that look like? What would we be able to do? And you know, th- those are difficult conversations. Um, so we came to a level service budget, which is a little bit less um, now, um, in terms of we're doing exactly what we're doing this year. And then we, we dug a little bit deeper and said, okay, we have revolving accounts. That's one of the things school systems have. And I saw the list of names of people here, many of whom have been involved in school systems. So they know this. Excuse me. So for example, school choice is a revolving account. As kids come into Maynard who don't live in Maynard, we get funds and they go into an account that we're able to use to offset our operating budget. And luckily we have a business manager, uh, Wayne White, who's on screen, who's really good at keeping us financially, um, fiscally responsible and financially conservative. And we've been able to use our revolvers to really maintain that gap that we talked about between what the town allocates and what we want to spend on our students. This year, it's the green row across the middle of your screen, which talks about a minimum service budget's 23,629,565, which is about three and a half percent above what we spent last year. And it's above what we spent. It's more than that above what the town allocated last year. But recognize what we spent last year. That's what we base that on. That's what it cost us to do business in FY24. So three and a half percent is not significantly, that's not a huge ask. That maintains some of what we've been able to add on to our programming and our buildings, things that make us successful, things that are good for kids. For example, a fourth nurse, given the needs of our students, we absolutely need that, uh, a counselor at Green Meadow. Um, and we're able to do that by making some reductions in other budget lines. One, there are a couple of things, several things in fact, that we were not able to fund, which we, if they're part of our priorities, we would love to have them, but they're in the higher um, enhanced level service budget, if you will. And we recognize we had to make some hard decisions. So in the minimum service budget, which will be the recommended, um, we don't have an athletic trainer, although we want one. So I don't want people to misunderstand because we're not, we're saying we can get by without that. Um, it's not that we don't want it, but we recognize we can't have everything we want. Um, a literacy coach, an MTSS, uh, person at Fowler School. Those are things that we've had through Esser funding, and they have been helpful, uh, really helpful. They will be missed. The people who did them did a phenomenal job. They, they, they helped students. They helped staff. We've grown as a system because of those things. And in a perfect world, I would keep those things, no question. But even without those things, to meet that budget number of 23,629, we need, we will use everything the town allocates us, plus, and here's sort of the deal breaker. We will use $800,000 of our revolving accounts. For us, that's a big deal. That's a big number. It's, and I'll be, let's just be frank, that is not a sustainable number. I will not be able to come back to you year after year and say, we're going to use $800,000 out of our revolving accounts because they're not being replenished as quickly as we're spending them. I'm just letting that sink in. But at the same time,
I'm going to reinforce that when we, we open.
Yeah, you can reinforce. But we also don't want to leave money sitting in the savings account, if you will, in the revolving account and have to hurt programming or hurt students. So that's why we're spending that money. Just so we're clear there. The town's recommended budget, um, is 22,839, which is not enough. Quite frankly, that wouldn't, that just isn't enough for us. It would require significant reductions to our educational services, our programming, our kids. It would eliminate, it would eliminate staffing that we don't want to lose, we're not willing to lose. And it would still require us to spend a significant portion, $300,000 of our revolvers. So for us as a team, that wasn't a, an option. It was, it was too deep of a cut. So we looked at what can we spend, and we'll get to that slide briefly in a moment. All right, Colleen, let's go to that next slide. The next couple are quick. So this is essential positions that we are keeping that I mentioned, the fourth nurse and the school adjustment counselor at Green Meadow, and how we're paying for them. Absolutely important. The next slide talks about some positions that we're unfortunately unable to fund right now. In the future, we'll keep our eye on them. We absolutely think they are important and beneficial to the system. The athletic trainer, the literacy coach, and the MTSS role. And then it will show you exactly where we're pulling money from, from our revolving accounts. Um, you can see it's a lot. It's from our preschool account. So we have a preschool program. It's tuition-based. We have, we have some funds in there. We're going to use $200,000 from that account. We're going to use $100,000 from our foreign exchange account. Circuit Breaker is a reimbursement account, which if you want to know all about Circuit Breaker, Wayne's going to open up and talk about Circuit Breaker. But it's, it reimburses for, uh, expenses related to special education. So it is one that does get reimbursed, but it's got restrictions. It's for specific things related to special education. I can't just say, oh, I want to use that to pay for a nurse, for example, or I want to use that to pay for another teacher to keep class size down. That, that one's pretty restricted. School Choice has the asterisk because it also says, goes down to the bottom of that screen. We have less money in there and we're bringing in less money. The nice thing about that one is it has the least amount of restrictions, so we can support the overall operating budget nicely with that one. But still, total amount is $800,000 from revolving accounts. And again, I won't have the ability to come back to you in a year and say, we want to do this again. I want to do it again. Uh, quite frankly, I would love to be able to do it again, but we won't have the same amount of money in those funds to do that next year. For FY26. And then somebody's dog likes that. They're pretty happy with us so far. And the next slide is really a repeat of the last slide because we kind of shortened our presentation for the town budget committee meeting. So you've just seen this. You just heard this. It's just a reminder of that green row in the middle is that minimum service budget. We are, we can really provide the same level of programming for our students and support for our staff. Um, it's a, 23 and a half million dollars. It's a significant drain on our revolving accounts. It's about three and a half percent above what we spent last year. Um, and we will have a different conversation a year from now when I'm sitting here. But this is a good conversation for this year.
Before you move off of this slide, just a clarifying point because it's, this is the second place I'm seeing it. The, um, Town Administrator Recommended Budget, you have the 0.3% from expended. But I know the number over the prior allocation is about 2.75% or something along that. Can we? I just want to call that out a little bit. I know the community generally looks at that number, and I don't want the takeaway here to think that that it was only a 0.3. Like it's a different way we've framed it this year. Um, so I just want to make sure. So from, this is what you've calculated or.
Based on what we spent last year.
Right. But over what was previously allocated. And Mary, you might, you might have, I think this was in the first, one of the first slides, you had the graph. I think it was what, 2.7, was it 2.75, Mary?
2.75, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So just to clarify, yeah, for, if we're, if, if things are, people are looking at how we, how it's been purvey, um, um, clarified in the, in the past. Um, it was 2.75 over our prior allocation, which is clearly not enough to fund, but I just wanted to put that number out there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that we can go to the next slide. It just says thank you, and it really then turns it over to you to open it up for questions.
Okay. Um, I'm going to just say a couple of things, and then I'll go around to the school committee. Um, one, just to reinforce, Brian, what you mentioned about the reliance on those accounts. Um, I know there was a slide, and it probably is in a larger presentation um, that looks at how much we've relied on, on those funds. Um, it was pretty significant what we're going into next year. So I, I just reinforcing, this is something that is only kicking the can down as what we've conveyed that I think at all of our finance meetings, that this is not, um, next year will be a really tough, uh, discussion. A lot of other towns are having that discussion this year um, for override. So I think as a community, we probably should really be, um, expecting to have um, that next year because there will be, this is, this is our, this is our, this is our savings and the, the part with the school choice. The other part is that it's, the revenue continues to go down for that. So we, that are one, one account that we do have flexibility is coming in lower and lower every year for our, or what we can rely on. So that's just, um, something to, to call out as well. Um, I do thank you, Brian, for, and, and the leadership team for all of your hard work and, and putting something together. I know last budget season was, felt very contentious. And, um, I, I know we have a lot of other town priorities as well, and I think, um, trying to present something that is, keeps things moving, which would does not take us back, um, is what you've, what you've worked on to do. And I think everyone, um, from what I've seen, I think it's, um, it's, it's a, it's a great option at this point with what we have. So, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and, um, start off. Elizabeth, I don't know if you want to have the U on my screen. I didn't know if you wanted to have any questions or thoughts. Oh, she's muted.
Thanks. Those are my dogs that were excited. Um, so, um, actually, the things that you just said, Natasha, were the things I wanted to say um, to highlight those exact same things. So I'm glad that you did that. I think it is important that everybody knows that, that we are up against some tough times and that, you know, all, you know, that it is, we are digging into our savings and that this is not something we can continue to do. I think is important to see. Um, and I, I think that, I think that Brian has been strategic and, and thoughtful about how we use the money that we do have and what we can dig into for this year without it being an emergency immediately. Um, and that's, it's just a, it's just a hard time. And like you said, it's not just here. So it is unfortunate. So, yeah, I think that that's, that's really all there is to highlight.
Yeah, I think the, the reliance, just to kind of frame it, it's a, it's been, it's a risk-based decision. I don't think anyone is entirely comfortable with the approach of going as deep as we have. It's not something we've done. I think we recognize as well that if it gets to a point where, you know, the town, we have reserve funds at the town level as well. So if there's some unanticipated maintenance, we have that relationship with FinCom that we might, you know, have a resource there, which has helped us in the past when we've needed it. But again, um, you know, not, it's a risk-based decision. I think we, we're all kind of weary in making, but at this point, the right thing at this juncture. Hillary, I don't know if, but uh, oh, you're muted too.
Um, mostly just, I, you know, I appreciate that we're making this risk right now so that the kids can get what they get next year. Um, but I think we need to, like, almost really literally lay it out at town meeting that there's no more money left after this. And that the same way we're hearing towns, I think a lot of people are hearing about ACTN and the debate there. That's, I don't see, I don't see a way that we're not going to be in that position next year. Um, like, so when we stress the difficulties next year, you know, last year I thought that the town should have allocate, I, I thought that the allocation we were getting was, um, a, a choice for the town. Like the town could have made a different choice and given us what we needed. Um, this year, I'm not so, I'm not sure, but next year, I don't know that the town would even be able to, even if they chose to prioritize the school and how, and meeting all the needs of the school, I don't know that it's even a possibility at that point. So I don't think it's, I, I think we need to stress it. It's not, you know, hyperbole. It's, it's very much, we're going to have to prepare for probably needing an override a year from now.
I, I, I agree. Uh, Mara?
Um, I agree with, with Hillary that we definitely need to, um, make the, um, voters aware, um, at, at town meeting. Um, because I, I also don't see how next year is, is going to go without, you know, even with the, I still think that even with an override, I still don't think that we're going to get enough money. Um, so I think we're still going to end up having to cut. Um, and that's really, really concerning. Um, so, you know, to be able to let town voters know and that we're, you know, I think we're going to have to do quite a bit of marketing over the next year to, you know, to let the town know how, you know, where we're at and, and how, um, you know, if we want to keep going with the way, with the programming that we have set forward, which I think is fantastic. And, and I don't personally think that it's like over the top, the things that we're, that we're asking for.
No.
So I think that that's, it's, you know, definitely really imperative that we're communicating, um, this message out. That's it. Thanks.
Yep. Um, a couple of things I just wanted to add. Um, Mary, did you, did you have anything?
Yeah, but if you want to add, do yours.
Yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, just real quick. Um, so in addition to, I, I think when we talk about override, and I think we need to think about it, the town as a whole. You know, there are so many things, education one for certain. Um, but if anyone has had the opportunity to see the ACABIT presentation that has come out since we've done our budget conversations, ACABIT VOTAC, which has, you know, 65, 63 Maynard students that go there. They're experiencing the same, uh, crunch there, but their assessments are going up eight percent every year that we have to pay them. Um, they, you know, they're hiring an athletic trainer next year. Um, there are, you know, things with transportation, you know, they subsidize complete transportation. Um, so what I want to make sure that we look at it, it's really the holistic approach, right? We don't want it to be, uh, um, the educational experience aside from just being VOTAC, you know, to public, you know, to Maynard as, um, the, the general uh, general school, it shouldn't feel like a completely different experience um, of resources that are being able to be funded for the different, um, schools. And, and that's what I worry about. Is that it comes down to, we're, we're all fighting over the same, you know, very sliver piece of pie because you only get two and a half percent um, that you can bring in. Um, and that's just not enough for overall revenue. I, there are needs around the town. I know DPW has the garage, like there's a whole bunch of things. And this is what I think when we talk about override, that's what my, my hope would be is that we're talking about the needs of the town, not just education. Of course, that's what I, I think we advocate for, but um, there's so many things that can't be done. The capital, um, the, the capscom has a lot of projects around town that can't be funded because there's just not enough revenue that is coming in. So that's the approach I would hope that we look forward to. But as it comes to our budget, the school, I think, um, we certainly need to, um, be realistic on what the future looks like for Maynard Public Schools and the horizon, there's no windfall of, of, um, there's another 129 opening up that we could expect an influx of, of revenue that's coming in, um, that, so. Anyway, uh, Mary, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I wanted to just stop by thanking Brian and all of the staff, um, the leadership team um, for being so creative and so strategic in, in helping, um, this budget that it did not negatively impact the, the kids, which is what we're all about. Um, and also wanted to give special kudos to, um, Wayne for using the Esser funds, um, the way that we did in that, you know, we're hearing so many different cities and towns that really incorporated the Esser funds into the general fund and, you know, as tough of a situation as we're in right now, they're in dire. you know, as tough of a situation as we're in right now, they're in dire straits. So thank you very much, Wayne, for, you know, being such a good steward for um, those S R funds. And uh, you know, I'm I'm constantly saying, I've been saying forever that um, if our school system stays the same level, then we're actually falling behind because it just, education is just not like that. The world is not like that. So got a lot to be proud of. We've got a new literacy program. We're gonna have a new math curriculum. Um, we've got the new value, the new assessments that we're putting in, we've put in place. I see Mark Sinopoli here. We just uh, Governor Healy just um, certified Maynard as one of the thirty two communities, I think, to to have a computer science pathway. So thank you, Mark, for that. You know, the work on the DECA business pathway up at the high school. So in light of all of, or in spite of all of these financial constraints, we've been doing some great, great things. Thanks to, thanks to everybody. Um, but yeah, I've got one of my notes is the scary elephant in the room is that the fact that we are using our our eight hundred thousand dollars um, safety net. Um, God forbid if we have any kind of um, um, unexpected um, costs that comes to us, we're gonna be in a difficult position. So I'm hoping that we can actually get the rest of the boards on um, on track as far as an override goes, cause that's our first challenge. You're you're hearing different, different members of the different boards saying, you know, not being um, as upfront about needing an override as we do. I remember Dr. Masterson, when we had him as a superintendent, I don't know, four or five ago, he said, really, we should, and that was a long time ago. He said, every ten years, we should be going for an override just for the operating, cause the two and a half percent, the, you know, just is not, wasn't even cutting it then, never mind now. So um, I think as as well as us working as a community, we just have to really start hitting the pavement as far as our state representatives go in that because they, it needs to come down loud and clear. I think it is hitting the state as far as, you know, the fact that we're just not getting enough money. Um, I know the state isn't in in a great situation now too, but it's multifaceted, what we, what we have to do to help help these kids. So that's it.
Colleen, I was gonna open it up. Um, do we have any public comments that?
You need a vote to continue because it stated that seven thirty five, the public hearing will end.
Oh, okay. Without objection, are we um, are we okay with extending?
It has to be roll call.
I don't think it, it's, the end time is not set. It's just approximate.
We've done this in past um, budget hearings.
Okay, all right. So I'll go ahead and extend for another, well, first, let me see if there's anyone, we have anyone who has public comment. Okay, so any public comments that you, I don't think we got anything in the email. All right. So I think I'm actually just gonna if, go ahead and and close the public hearing if that's. Okay, so I'll go ahead and um, make a motion that we close the public hearing. Any second?
Second.
Okay, all right, roll call. Um, Mary?
Yes.
Mauro?
Yes.
Hillary?
Oh, she needs to be unmuted.
Um, I'm a little bit resistant to saying yes, because I don't, I feel like the way that that conversation just went. People who maybe had something to say might feel like they should hurry it up since, you know, we're ten minutes over and I'm just.
No, we're not, we're not. It was, no, we're not over. It was just that whether we were gonna extend it, if we had public comments, or we were just closing it. No one was raising their hand yet, from what I was seeing. So we didn't have any hand raised. So it wouldn't make sense to me do a roll call to extend for ten minutes if we have no, no one. But if, that's, that's why. So I don't know if you
I'll say yes, but I I don't really like how that played out, cause I feel like people
Okay.
but may may have felt like they shouldn't say raise their hand at this point and.
No, anyone, if anyone has a comment, please raise your hand.
We love them. We want them.
Yes, yes. Every, every, every budget hearing, we almost get no comment. So that's.
I know we almost get no comments, but I feel like this, there's, you know, looking at the people who are, have joined, they might have really great feedback or questions or comments or concerns and this, I really want people to comment and share.
Aside from calling on people, which I really don't wanna do, I don't know what else I can do except for just all that. So.
Does it prevent anybody from making a comment in the public comments if they have a second thought?
No.
All right.
Right? Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, who denied? So Hillary, are you yes or?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Elizabeth, did I call on you? Sorry.
And yes.
Yes, okay, you're yes, okay. And then, oh, myself, yes. So of course, now that we're closing the public hearing, if anyone still has a question later on, maybe tomorrow, please send an email or a comment. We will read your comment if it's something you think about later, obviously.
Or in a few minutes when we get to the public comment section of the regular meeting.
Yes, Hillary, Hillary is dying for someone to to give a comment. And I don't know if she's gonna want us to move on unless someone does, so.
Well, I just, it's so much more helpful and productive to have a discussion in this format than on Facebook or you know.
Well, that's not, yeah, that's not really a discussion on Facebook. Um, okay. Yeah, I I agree. All right. So I'll go ahead. Now that we are closed the public hearing, I'll return back to um, any, a regular scheduled meeting. Brian, any urgent business?
No, no urgent business tonight.
Okay, all right. And now we have a public comments agenda. Anyone wants to think about Hillary's urge, you know, request? All of us. Should we sit in awkward silence for a thirty seconds just to make sure?
Now they're really gonna feel weird about raising the hand.
I know, I know. All right, okay. Don't wanna make it that awkward. All right. Um, so seeing no public comments and not having any emails, I will go ahead and move on to the student representative report. Kaylee, thanks for joining this evening.
Hi. So for our highlights, we have the international dinner. Last week was a huge success and a highlight of the year so far. Um, Maynard Jazz Night was an amazing concert featuring female jazz artists as part of the Jazz Her Initiative. Fowler and MHS students played with the international artists. Today, nearly fifty MHS music students attended the Boston Symphony Orchestra. They learned a lot, heard great music and had fun. The CDMAC Spring Conference is rescheduled for April eleventh due to today's storm. Eight MHS students are attending and Kaylee Donahue is running for public relations representative. Um, for concerns and solutions, WAVM students want to start planning for next year. They met with the Friends of WAVM on Tuesday to work out a timeline. And we are brainstorming for next year's school improvement plan. In upcoming, we have Ms. Adams is looking for families interested in the Spanish and German exchange programs for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. Um, an art gallery field trip is planned in Lawrence on May first. We have an Earth Day celebration on April tenth. Um, opening games for spring sports have started and will continue to start. Senior pops nights is coming up. I believe auditions were today. And senior projects are on the horizon.
Is there any particular senior projects that?
Um, I know we discussed at the meeting, a few students are doing something on body image. Get this specifics on that. I know my older brother is planning on doing something with the Maynard Business Alliance, not sure what, but.
And there was someone who was doing um, a li, I know this is gonna, Mary might love this, the financial literacy um, for Fowler, right? Was that?
Yeah, he's planning on doing a presentation, Luke Flair is planning on doing a presentation for Fowler students on financial literacy.
Yes, Mary, as soon as I was like, oh, you were just asking about that recently. So I was like, I wanna make sure you heard that update. So students are, yeah, I thought that was really cool. Um, Kelly, thank you. And can you speak a little bit more about that, the position? I know I I I went to the the site meeting the other day, but it seemed like there was a lot of enthusiasm about you and this particular position that you're running for. Can you?
Yeah, so CDMAC is a subdivision of MAC, which stands for the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils, and it's essentially student councils from all over the state um, come together for different events. Um, and we do workshops and keynote speakers and all sorts of community service events. And each region, there's four, I believe, um, has an, a executive board. And I'm running to be the public relations officer for the central districts board, which will entail um, running and managing like the social media pages, um, updating the website and communication between students and the board, um, organizing camp elections for next year and general stuff for relations positions.
I just, that was really, really cool, exciting. I know it takes a lot to put your name out there to to go through um, an election, you know, process. So kudos to you for really um, stepping forward. I think that's great that, and good luck. Is there, when is, when will that take place?
Um, so the election is the conference that's rescheduled for next Thursday. So I'm not exactly sure when the results will come out, but we give speeches and do voting then. So either the end of the conference or the next day.
Okay. Well, good luck. All right. And Mary, I'll go ahead and any questions, comments?
Just thank you again, Kaylee. Can we send letters of recommendation?
I wish.
No, you would have had five of them at least anyway. But thank you very much. And thanks for stepping up to to run for that. That's pretty cool.
Mauro?
I don't have any, anything uh, extra, but Kaylee, thanks so much. That's really fantastic. And I hope that you win.
Thank you.
Elizabeth? Oh, muted.
Thanks and the same, sorry. I'm I'm needing to say exactly what Mauro said. So thank you again, appreciated.
Hillary? Oh, muted. Again.
Um, just thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
And just as I mentioned earlier, I was able to attend the their meeting this week and um, Superintendent Haas, the, the question of school or no school today was very much debated um, topic. I was about fifty fifty, I think, for the students. Half of them wanted a delay, half wanted no school. So just to let you know, it wasn't a consensus. I think people realized going into June, the next week was not great either. So.
Seniors were for the snow day.
Right, cause they wouldn't be there. Yeah. Everybody else was like, no.
Delay sufficed in this situation.
I I heard the possibility of bribery, although I'm not sure if anything played out. It doesn't seem like it since it was a school day today. But I just uh, thought that was pretty, pretty great to hear the conversation around that. And also um, WAVM, that I know that that came up, they were having their meeting, was it yesterday?
Um, Tuesday, I believe.
Okay. I know there was some conversation about just getting a little bit more organized and and planning for WAVM programmatically. So that'll be good to hear in the future how um, how that um, plays out. And and then I also um, gave an update about the bleacher, um, just because I know that there's been about, you know, the the delay. There were some questions about, you know, why that is looking at the fall as opposed to the spring. And just, you know, reaffirming our commitment to the students that we are still proceeding forward. A lot of it is just community um, seeking more information. And so there's not necessarily substantive changes in the project scope itself. It's just giving the town time to process the designs and information and the costs associated with it, um, not feeling rushed. So uh, Kaylee, I don't know if you had any questions about the budget. I know that was just, we had our hearing, but if anything, any thoughts on that?
Um, no, I think it was good. It seems, I mean, I didn't understand all of the financial talk, but um, seems kind of like a similar issue last year. Um, hopefully this year we can make it work again.
No problem. If there's any questions.
Will there be a town meeting for that like there was last year?
Yeah, so we'll go, we'll, um, so last year, so this will be, this will go to town meeting in May. And and then we'll, they'll vote on it. It won't, um, the school isn't taking a different position or recommending a different position, which is what we did last year. So we um, that that is a little bit, you know, not as challenged. So this is, we've worked with the, in our town budget subcommittee meeting uh, very well to discuss all the questions that we've had. Um, and I did mention also, which was uh, which discusses that the PEG access, so that part as uh, they, this luck board did vote on. So we do have funding for PEG, which is the public access um, for Verizon. Their contract was recent renewed. It'll be for five years. So that is it was, I I believe at the same level that they had. So that was a a good thing. We were worried about the potential of of losing Verizon or them, you know, coming in substantially lower um, to what they were wanting to fund uh, for PEG. And so we are grateful that that is a conversation that we can pivot for another time.
Yeah, I think it wasn't at about a hundred and eighty two thousand dollars or something that was.
It was like a hundred and eighty six. Yeah, their contract alone. And and so um, yeah, that would have been a hard, in addition to everything else. You know, again, it would've been a hard thing to overcome from from a town perspective. So okay, Kelly, thank you very much. Um, and you're, of course, you're always welcome to hang on. And if there's any other questions about budget things that if you guys meet um, in the future, please um, please email if you, there's anything that everyone else is thinking of.
Thanks, Kaylee.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Right. Superintendent uh, report, Brian, back to you.
Yeah, thank you. Since we just had a meeting last uh, last Wednesday, the report is somewhat short this week. It's not very, been very long, but it's focused on students, which fabulous to say. Uh, we had a senior, Emma Cryan, who received the first female Eagle Scout in Maynard history on March thirtieth. So that was super exciting. That's a really hard process and um, it's, it takes a lot of work for a lot of years. Um, so it's a huge accomplishment. So congratulations to her.
Yeah, and if I can just, um, I had the opportunity to be invited and it was, it was incredible. The room was filled. Um, Kate Hogan was there, Jamie Eldridge was there, our um, town administrator, Greg Johnson was there, our assistant principal up at the high school, Ms. Doctorov was there. Um, it was, it was incredible. Everybody, um, everybody giving kudos for her, her job well done. So. And she even had a day named after her, Saturday.
Yeah.
That was pretty cool. So anyway, sorry, Brian.
No, that's perfect. That's good addition, right on topic. The senior recital for Alvaro Gonzalez was April, will be, sorry, April twelfth at the Sudbury United Methodist Church. Um, and all donations support the Maynard Triumph Music Honor Society. So if you can make it, I'm sure, based on all the other musical experiences we've seen, it also will be very good. National Junior Honors Society Honor Society Award winner, uh, Fowler student, Arabella C., was selected as the National Junior Honor Society Outstanding Achievement Award recipient. So congratulations to her. And that involves scholarship, service, leadership, character and citizenship. And she will receive five hundred hours in a five twenty nine college savings amount to be applied toward her higher education. So very exciting. Um, lots of good, just lots of really exciting with student centered events recently and upcoming. In in personnel, we've, there's the end stages of our green medal principal search. That's a great search. I wanna, yeah, thank Chuck Hare Janus for chairing that and the committee and to get us to where we are today. We uh, we have two finalists with more information upcoming in the very, very near future. Uh, we are starting the process just in terms of personnel, continuing on with that. Director of Student Services, that search is beginning. Um, letter, I think that email actually went out today to form the committee. So if you know people or if you're online and you're somebody who wants to participate, um, reach out. And the Director of Facilities, um, that also is gonna be kicking off next week as well. The committee and job applicants. So it's a busy, busy spring for us with with a lot of really key roles and we're taking that very seriously. Um, and it's a great process. I'm sure they will be very successful. And I think one more final thing that I think Mary already mentioned, but and it was in the memo that you got, it'll go out after this meeting tomorrow. It'll go out on social media as well. Uh, but the fact that Maynard, it, Maynard High is really now an innovation pathway in computer science and Mark Sinopoli, who is online, really wanna thank him for all his efforts to make that a reality. We're really excited about that. I'm given everything we just talked about with budgets and how they've been tight. We're really excited about that. I'm given everything we just talked about with budgets and how they've been tight and how. We don't get funded a hundred percent forever and we manage to find a little bit more money to do what we need to do. Not only do we do that, but we have people like Mark Sinoply who go above and beyond. And then we're even able to go forward and become an innovation school, which there's only a handful in the state. So thank you to Mark. And if he wants to say anything, he's welcome to. I'm not putting him on the spot. It's just an opportunity. If he raises his hand, you should call on him. And if he doesn't. Hillary, don't call on him. I'm watching and I don't see a hand. Oh, I do.
Oh, good.
Okay, Mark, you're on. You might need to be unmuted. Colleen, can you unmark? Un, yeah, thank you.
Unmark, I'm.
Uh unmute Mark.
You're on, Mark. Why not?
Oh no, he'll figure it out. Mark, you are unmuted, but we can't hear you yet.
Oh, that's disappointing.
Wait time, wait time.
It's okay, we can, I think of all the the work that he's done, we can wait. Here we go, Mark.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, this is Eve Schluter, his wife.
Hi.
Hi.
Actually not on the.
Oh, that's so funny.
I know, so I wanted to just apologize. He actually, being the wonderful person he is, just took the dog out in this weather for me, so.
Oh.
So I apologize that he didn't get to hear that.
That's okay. Please, please pass along that, the accolades.
I will, sorry for that.
No worries.
That's okay, thank you.
I know, we got it. We, I was excited we got a hand raised. So thank you for raising your hand.
So then I will, uh, that's what I have for you tonight. So thank you.
Okay, um, any other, anyone have questions, comments for superintendent report, Hillary? No? Okay, um, Morrow?
Um, Brian, when do, when does the Green Meadow uh principal search, like when does that decision get made?
If all goes well tomorrow.
Okay, great, awesome.
And just so you know, in full disclosure, one of the two finalists is actually on screen. She might wave if you ask her to. There you go.
There you go.
Hi Heather.
Hi.
Wonderful.
Good question, Morrow.
Brian, if you can um just thank Bob Savoy too for hanging in there a little bit to help with facilities manager search. That I thought that was really great to try to.
Yeah.
Incorporate his, his talents.
Yes, absolutely. I will pass that on.
Alright, Elizabeth?
I know, thank you.
Okay, um, Brian, nope, nothing else.
Okay.
Alright, um, so then we are moving on to the literacy and math curriculum presentation. Guessing Chuck, this will be you.
That's correct.
And I'll be uh sharing my screen in a second. Uh if anything goes wrong, I did share this with Colleen. But I don't think anything will, oh, Colleen has it. Okay. I guess I will click on share that or or I could check and s- see what actually happens if two people are sharing the same simultaneously, but.
No experiments.
Experiment for another night. Um, the uh, this is just a brief four slide presentation. Um, on how things have been going with our uh ELA. Yeah, uh adoption and uh where we stand in the process of selecting a new math curriculum. Um if we go on to the next slide. We uh can see that uh. The materials for CKLA Amplify and Caminos now in their second full year of use in grades three to eight. Um, we've had a really good partnership with a group called Instruction Partners, uh which is a DESI approved vendor. Um, uh this vendor specifically works with districts around ELA adoptions. Uh, uh that um various districts have, um and. They've been instrumental in helping with the training of our staff in particular. Um, I think one of the things that's been stressed through all of the training and all of the work. Uh with the new curriculum is that we want our students to have what we're terming productive struggle. Um, we, we want our students to be doing the bulk of the work. We want our teachers to be acting as facilitators and coaches. Um, and we want the work to be, you know, I guess you'd call it in the zone of proximal development. Or in other words, that kind of work where with skillful teacher scaffolding, a student. Uh really uh pushes themselves a bit to uh always be improving their skill set. Uh always expanding where they're at. Uh under this model, really, the teacher's work. Is very much in the preparation for the lesson, the selection of materials. Um, the, the choices about student groupings. And once the period's underway, it's really the students that are, that are uh doing the work. Uh without the teacher, I guess, in the vernacular sort of. Giving away the answers if things are going a little too slowly. So um we've been very pleased with that work. Uh one thing that's pretty well known about new adoptions is frequently uh progress appears to go backwards. Uh while the, while the staff and students get kind of used to using the new curriculum. What we've seen this year, uh thanks to our, our map uh tool. Is uh that we're seeing that students are actually uh growing at a pretty good rate. So rather than have that sort of um hesitation or stumble out of the gate, that's. Not unusual at all for a new adoption, where I, we're seeing that the students are actually doing pretty well. Um, our students took the MAP test uh to create a baseline at the beginning of the school year. And they completed a a midyear assessment. In the midyear assessment compared to. The initial assessment is where you get a growth score from. We've seen at the Green Meadow. That they're actually uh at the Green Meadow above the national average in um. Both achievement and growth uh percentiles, so uh the students are doing quite well there. We're seeing at the Fowler School that um the school as a whole um is in the high achievement range. And they're just outside the high growth range. They're, they're very close to the high growth range. So again, there we're, we're getting indicators. From a nationally normed test that our students are actually doing quite well with their ELA curriculum. So we're very pleased with that. If you move on to the next slide to talk briefly about the math pilots. We've uh been working for a couple of years now toward this. Uh, we've had a extensive review by the Math Curriculum Committee. Uh, we have representatives from all three buildings. I believe there's eighteen members. Uh, it was determined that we would pilot Kendall Hunt's illustrative math and Carnegie math. Um, teachers in K to eight received training on illustrative math on February twenty seventh. And then actually piloted illustrative math through the month of March. Um, at the end of March, as they were wrapping up uh the pilot for illustrative math, they received training on Carnegie math. Um, and that pilot has begun uh this week. Um, so we are now in the second pilot. Um, we're gonna be piloting that through the month of April into early May. Um, we've uh agreed to an evaluation tool that we'll be using to um evaluate both of the. Curriculum uh. Uh, you know, tool of both of the curriculum uh. Um offerings that we've piloted. Uh, and we will be. On Monday at our next math committee meeting, uh we're gonna go beyond just saying we have a tool for the evaluation. We're gonna talk about the process, how we're gonna weigh the different elements of the tool and determine a uh. Like a final methodology to um make a decision. Uh, it's our goal at a, at our uh, I believe it's Monday, May fifth, we have uh one final meeting. And at that time, uh we're gonna complete the evaluation process and make a recommendation to the superintendent on May sixth. Um, so that's moving right along. Our timeline for that has shifted a bit uh over the course of the year. Um, it's gotten pushed back a little bit. Some of that had to do with when we could book the trainings and when it sort of made sense to. Take a whole block of time for each pilot. Um but we're still going to be completing the process. And making the recommendation by May sixth. Uh, the superintendent. Uh will be, or I will be able to report to the school committee at the meeting on May ninth. Um, which of the two curriculum uh are, is going to be put forward. Um, and it's our goal to have a, I mean, this has been budgeted for, so this isn't uh anything surprising. Um, so we hope to have the POs draw drawn up by the end of May and the, and all the materials and licenses on their way over the summer. To be ready to come in um for August and September. We do anticipate having further training just before the beginning of the school year. So that uh teachers using the math curriculum um will be up to speed as the school year opens. Um, so that, that's what uh our plans are. Um and if you go on to the final slide, Colleen. Um, we do know that the trend towards student results in ELA. Uh, using the CKLA Amplify and Caminos materials will continue to be supported. Uh, this just kind of, it's just about official as of today. We're going to be doing further training on our May early release day. And we're going to have a uh voluntary uh online session in June for further training. For our staff on CKLA and Amplify to keep that work moving forward. Um, and uh the budgetary impact right now is, is not great. Um, or we have grant funding for the uh training that we want to do. Uh, our licenses uh are are good for another year. We are considering bringing second grade under CKLA. Um, which would have uh some budget impact, um but we can handle that. Um, and uh the real, the real uh issue when, and uh Karen Lindquist at the Green Meadow. Has been in contact with uh our, our CKLA vendor. Um, our, the real impact will be when licenses do come up for renewal in out years, about two years from now. Uh, what amount of money we'll need to budget um annually um for license, license renewals. Um, most of those packages are typically in the form of eight year licenses, so. We would probably have a significant expenditure in one year and then minimal expenditures for the next seven years after that. So uh, the impact will not occur next year, but uh we are looking into right now getting. Quotes so that we can, can look at budgeting two years from now and beyond. Um, and again, the math curricular materials, uh the purchase has been um budgeted for. Um, and uh. Therefore, you know, it's, it's not like there'll be an unexpected bump in, in next year's budget. Uh because those funds have been set aside. Um, I was wondering if folks have any questions.
Yep, um, I actually had a question about, especially since you're talking about budgeting. I was reading recently about um the FY twenty five, there's a literacy launch initiative, the state. Um, Healy, they're looking to do for reading success from ages three through grade, grade three. Um, and there looks to be some funding in FY twenty five relating to this. I, I haven't really actually read a lot. In depth, I just know it was in the news a couple of times. Um, but there's a lot of focus on um. Literacy funding in the upcoming budget. I don't know if that um, there's opportunity there.
I'll take a look.
Um, and then kind of a related question to that, as you're looking into it. Is. Is because it's targeting from age three to grade three, this literacy launch, reading success. Um, how does that complement what we are already doing? Or would we need, you know, I guess maybe a follow up once you were able to provide more information if um. If our current literacy plan for the lower grades would need to shift um as a result.
That's an interesting thing about grants, right? Um, Grant has money. Doesn't always mean that the money aligns with what you want to do.
Right, and that's what I was wondering is if, if the money, if it's gonna come with um. Yeah, I don't know the details about it, but maybe if we could see, because I, I know that we're putting so much effort and if there's licensing that you, we're looking that we're gonna need to be paying soon. For uh CKLA, if there's an opportunity or a barrier there, if it means that we'd have to change our, our plan in order to do that.
Yeah, uh one, one would like to think that since the state has approved CKLA. And is grant funding us for training and everything, I would like to think that the new initiative wouldn't.
Align.
Fail to dovetail with that. Um, but you know, you, you never know till you, till you read it though, so.
Right, and I think that's what I was wanting to make sure, exactly that, is that because we've, we've, our focus has been so much, you know, that three. That CKLA three and you're looking to expand it, I think this other initiative is more of the lower um grades.
So I might look into it, yeah.
Okay, and then my other question about the math um as well, and I, I didn't really think about this when we were doing our calendar. Um, do we need to have an additional, you mentioned that in June, there's gonna be an optional day for PD for.
For CKLA.
At CKLA, but what about the, the math curriculum is, do we feel like that there needs to be, and I know maybe this is a Brian, like additional. PD before the school starts for that.
We, we, we are planning on that. We're, we're planning just before the start of the school year to have uh. Math training available. Um, we're also looking at the very early um. Professional development days because although uh we. Will be offering it very close to the start of school year. It isn't within the contractual year, so we can't mandate that people attend. I suspect we'll have a pretty good turnout from the, the that I've been receiving. But we also know that we'll need to do additional training very early in the year. Um, all of the teachers did receive uh training um prior to the pilots. But you know, that's, that was a single three, four hour session. Um, and they've had an opportunity to look at uh teachers' guides and materials for several weeks. But it's still not the sort of, it, it's not the level of training that we'd want people to have uh going into the year. So we will be offering additional training opportunities just before the start of the school year when it's fresh. Um, and uh in those early uh professional development days.
Okay, great. Um, Mary?
Yeah, um, thank you, Chuck, very much. I was wondering, um, that, um, growth scores and that, you, you had the baseline and then the midyear. Um, two questions regarding that. Are we gonna be able to see, and I know you said that, you know, it's gonna be sporadic as to, you know, the. The growth in that, although it sounds like it's, it's going really well. Can we see an end of year? Um, is that something that is planned so that we can, you know, take a look at that ourselves?
Uh, yes, actually, the, the MAP model does call for a beginning of the year, midyear and end year assessment. And then um, one of the nice things about the MAP tool too is as you go into your second year and beyond. You can then start to track uh grades um longitudinally over time. And you can even track individual students longitudinally over time. So you can uh, you can, it's a. You know, there's an old saying about MCAS, uh you know, when you get the MCAS, it's a postmortem. Um, and uh, the MCAS is particularly uh. Not as useful as you would hope for uh at the elementary level, because it's really the third graders are the only grade that. Take an MCAS test. They take it late in their third grade year. You know, the results come out over the summer. And by then they're already into the Fowler School and uh, you know, on their way to the fourth grade. So uh, one of the reasons we did bring in MAP is we wanted at all grade levels. uh, one of the reasons we did bring in MAP is we wanted at all grade levels to have that more fine-grained um sense of how students were doing over the course of the year. And MAP has a very robust um uh ability to look at individual student responses and see what specific areas within the ELA and specific areas within math where a student might need additional support. Um, and also for students that are doing quite well, it really strongly indicates that, you know, even though the student might be in fourth grade in certain areas of math or ELA, really, they, they should be having fifth or sixth grade level material. So um it, it's a, it's a much, it's a much better um tool to inform instruction uh within the school year. Uh, the, it's just not what MCAS is designed to do.
I'm really, I'm hoping it's gonna be a game changer. Actually, it sounds like it could be for the kids um specifically. So um, the other, my other question about that was, can, I know you said, you know, they, the MAP um does the um, the comparison nationally. Did, can we also get it by the state? Can we just look at Massachusetts and where we rank there?
Yes, and in fact, you can, you can, one of the things that you can do with the MAP tool is you can project a student against MCAS scores, uh, and it has a high degree of reliability. So you can look at an individual student. You could look at Chuck, right? And you say Chuck is growing, but we can project that at this rate of growth. He really won't get to a proficiency standard by the time he takes the test in tenth grade. So uh, he's not far off the beam though. So if we can just get him a little bit of additional support year by year between now and tenth grade, we can kind of so what you're talking about in terms of MAP is can we bend the, his growth curve up just a little bit to create a projection that would bring him to proficiency by the time he takes MCAS in tenth grade. Um, so it really has that level of detail. Uh, it can link directly to state MCAS and it can link directly to Massachusetts uh median scores. So um, yeah, it's a very interesting tool that way.
Wow. So if that could be incorporated into the presentation at the end of the year too, you know, the nationwide comparison, but also if we could look at the state cause we all know that Massachusetts is way up there, thank goodness. Um, anyway, that would be great. Thank you. And my, my last question is having to do with the pilot, the math pilot. Um, it's the same teachers that are doing both pilots, right? They go from one to the other, so the same kids in that, which is what I assumed, but um, they, how many, how many teachers are part of that and what grade levels?
So it's uh, it's grades K to eight. Um, and if you tally up all the teachers, it's uh, we've also trained special educators. We're somewhere north of thirty, somewhere around thirty-five teachers.
Great. That's great. It's a good, good base. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mauro?
Uh, this is great. Thank you very much. I um, guys have done a really great job and um, I had a question about um, the, the amount of money that we spend. So, so we spend a certain amount of money, say on the Go Math that we're no, we can no longer get. That money, I'm assuming is gonna go towards the new math curriculum. Um, unless it's similar to the, the CKLA where we, we buy the license for however many years. So I'm just wondering like, how is that? I guess I'm, I would like to know, you know, a approximately how much we're talking about here with um if we're talking about, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or only fifty, you know, because of the amount that we already budget. And is this over the amount that we already budget for, for this kind of instruction um materials?
So, right now with Go Math, um, we're pretty much for several years have been purchasing the expendables. Um, things like workbooks for students, um, things that are used up annually. Uh, there will be some materials like that, whichever uh whichever curriculum we bring in. So I don't think the expendable costs will be appreciably different. Um and the upfront cost would be as if, you know, in, in the olden days of about, you know, ten years ago, uh, when you would buy a set of textbooks. You know, you knew that you would have a big cost in one year and then those, that cost would not reappear until you replace that series. Um, similarly with licensing now, if we purchase, say, eight-year licenses, which is what Karen is looking into. Um, you know, our big expenditure would be this year. The consumable cost would be the sorts of costs that we've always absorbed. Um, but you'd know that eight years from now would be another big year. And so as you look at curriculum in general, that's why you try to stagger adoptions so that uh um, you know, you don't have ELA, math, world language and science all landing in the same year where, you know, suddenly you're trying to figure out how to come up with half a million dollars or something. Um, and you could say, yeah, but you know, we're not gonna have to spend a half a million dollars for another eight years. So that, that still isn't very helpful, cause you're gonna kind of torch that individual year, which is something you really can't do.
Okay, thank you.
Hillary?
Oh, um, okay, I have a few questions. Um, for the um ELA piece, when you said that the trends, that you are seeing early trends, was that specifically for the kids that are using the CKLA or did that include the younger kids that were using the sort of um piecemealed approach?
So uh, for this presentation where it was for CKLA, um, uh, this presentation was about CKLA. But I did look at the MAP trends in uh K one, two, and they're actually quite strong. Um, so uh I was very pleased to see that as well. Um, what the reason we're considering adding CKLA to grade two is that, that the data coming out of our students who have, you know, done K one is actually looking quite good now. So we're thinking that moving into a more uh literature-based uh real reading program, kind of moving from uh I think it, it appears that our students are in a position to start the transition from learning to read to reading to learn. Uh, it looks like they're in position to really start doing that in the second grade. Um, and uh, so that's why we're considering CKLA, uh, moving that into the second grade. But the
Well, the second grade, oh, sorry.
The scores were quite, quite strong though.
Would the second grade CKLA still be able to help the kids who haven't really learned how to read totally yet?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then the complaint that I had heard from kids and parents about CKLA is that it remind, it felt a lot like distance remote learning, where they were on the computer for extended periods of time. Has that changed? Like, I haven't heard that much this year. Um, I heard that the year previously. Is that something that the teachers are complaining about, that the kids are not liking or ha- has that um, in the second year of implementation, sort of been able to be worked into the day in a different way, that it's not um as much of a complaint?
I don't know exactly how to answer that because I haven't been getting, excuse me. Oh, almost get a big sneeze. Um, uh, I haven't heard any complaints this year, so I don't know if that's a, I honestly don't know if it's a function of the students and teachers are getting used to how it's presented. Um, I don't know if the teachers have done some sort of adapting of the material. So that's, that's something I'd need to check into more, but uh, like you, I just, I have received no complaints from teachers or from parents uh about that this entire year. And I say, no, I mean, like none, zero.
Yeah, that's awesome. Um, for the math, um, I had tried to look on the ed reports for the two, those two curriculums. And I, I don't see the Carnegie one for K through five. Um, is it new or is it, is there any reason for that? Or is it just my error in not finding it?
I'm trying, I'm trying to recall, uh, there's ed reports and what's the other one?
Curate, is it on curate?
Right, yeah.
I believe it's on
It's not on there either.
Uh, I know I saw it on, on there somewhere. Um, so uh, I can, I can double check on that, but uh, um, Carnegie is, is definitely there. Um.
Okay.
Hillary, were you asking about what, what grades were you particular, the?
Um, the K through five. I saw it for six to eight in high school. I just didn't see it for K through five. So I was wondering if maybe they had only done older grades and just expanded it to younger or something along those lines. Um, and then I was just wondering, like, what was the appeal about those two? Um, from all the different options, like, what, what are you most excited about with regards to those two? What was the appeal?
So with illustrative math, um, the appeal to the group is or was because that was a few months ago, ago now. Um, illustrative math from references we got from other districts and things that we read and actually examination of the material by the math teachers. Um, really does a very strong job at um, having students work in groups and teams to really understand the underlying math concepts. Um, in a way that's much deeper than traditional math curriculum. Uh, and so I guess the easiest way is if you're thinking about as students get to say pre-algebra and algebra, it's not, can you remember this formula? Um, and even can you remember this formula and can you use it to solve even a real-world problem? But do you know why the formula exists? Do you know why the formula works? Because as students get into more and more advanced mathematics, um, the kind of formula memorization uh and plug it in here, plug it in there uh really starts to fall apart when you, particularly when you're getting into calculus and in upper level uh math and trigonometry. Um, so we were really attracted by uh, having students have a much deeper understanding so that it wasn't sort of a rote exercise uh to, to take the rote out of mathematics and really get an, an understanding. Um, so that was the appeal there. Uh, Carnegie has a number of uh it, the strength seems to be in uh real-world applications, the way their problems are set out uh seems to be uh really lend itself toward um much more of, here's a problem you really would see uh in your life. Um, and uh, I think that was the appeal. Uh, again, was to, to get away from sort of formulaic mathematics and get into uh, you know, um you, I was in a fourth grade class uh recently and, you know, they were talking about perimeter. Um, you know, perimeter is a math concept. It just means the edge of a, of a geometric two-dimensional shape, but uh, and you add it all up together. But you know, you get into things like uh, you wanna put baseboards into a room. You know, how many feet of baseboard do you need to get? Well, that, that's a, that's a perimeter problem. Um, so that's a super simplistic example, but you know, to, to again, move, move it into here's something you might actually do, or if you're, if you're a ten-year or a year-old or eleven-year-old, here's something you might see your parents doing in your house, or here's something you might see out in the real world at a park or something like that, you know, uh, what's the math behind that? So that was the appeal for each of those and uh, um the illustrative pilot, uh, the feedback from the teachers was actually very good. That the concerns with illustrative that I've heard initially really aren't about the curriculum itself. People are concerned about um, uh, it's very teacher-intensive early on and in the first year or two. Uh, it really asks a lot of the staff in terms of planning. Um, but once those lessons are planned, they've been extremely pleased with the results. So you know, this uh, there is the possibility and, and we did hear this from other districts as well, that particularly year one is a really heavy lifting year for staff with illustrative math. Um, Carnegie math, we're just in the first week. The report was, the training was very good. Um, but uh, you know, I, I popped into a classroom today and you know, they're, they're just a couple of days into it at this point. So it's really way too early to say much beyond that.
Hillary, any other?
Thank you so much. That was really good to hear.
Elizabeth?
Hi, yeah, thanks, Chuck. Just to follow up with what Hillary's just talking about, um, as far as the pilot goes. Um, so I'm imagining that the pilot last month stopped off at a point and then you're picking up at that same point with the next pilot, right? They kind of, I assume that they're kind of lining up in a very similar way for each grade so that they're covering the same material in the grade.
They're, so they're, they're, they're maintaining the grades progression through the curriculum. So we're not doing the same material in Carnegie that we did in illustrative. It's more like in whatever the next topic would normally be. So when the teachers were looking at the illustrative unit, they were looking for the unit to fit into where they were in their process in the year. And now that we're into Carnegie, they're looking at where they would be in their grade uh at this point in the year, um, because they didn't wanna, you know,
Mess it up.
Yeah, yeah, they, they didn't wanna, you know, double up on something and then have the students miss
Right.
Essentially learning time during the year.
And, and then I guess because you can't pilot this, um, you can only pilot like how it feels in the classroom. When you're looking at both of those curriculums, um, they are, are they covering the same material? Or is there something that one's leaving out that the other one covers? Is there any issue with that sort of thing?
Well, I, I know that, I know they're both well-aligned to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. Um, how they, we are inserting them into what teachers normally do. So I would almost doubt that the align, you know, the alignment would be perfect. I do think the alignment is pretty good. You know, it would be the same topics. Um, I don't know what to say.
Okay. And then both of them, I imagine stop right before algebra? Or do they stop right before geometry?
Um, they actually go up through algebra in um uh, grading and um, the high school teachers actually requested the uh the companies do have additional curriculum that it extends into high school. So the high school teachers, we were able to get sets of teacher's guides and sample texts uh for Algebra one, I'm sorry, Algebra one, two and Geometry. So the high school teachers have been kind of going through those to try to get a sense of the type of preparation they could expect as, as, you know, a, a flavor of what the students would have been learning prior to getting to the high school. So the high school staff is looking through the materials as well. And the high school staff has been invited uh to the trainings as well. So even though they wouldn't necessarily be using Carnegie or illustrative at the high school, it, they, they were at the training so they could get a sense of what students uh, what student preparation would look like in the, in the grades leading up to high school.
Great. That's exactly what I was wondering is that I just wanted to make sure that there's no chance that they'd be like, oh no, we thought they would come in with this and now they don't have it anymore because of the change in curriculum. But that's, but you're covering that base. So that's really good to hear. So thank you for that. And just out of curiosity, I'm wondering how you, what kind of measurement tool you chose um, or they chose to decide which one to use and, you know, how they chose it.
So uh, Terry Morrison was really took the lead on, on this. Um, she's the math coach at the Green Meadow, actually. Um, she, she wanted to take this on and I didn't stop her. She said, I, I live for this kind of stuff. So um, she went out, uh, surveyed some districts, looked at tools that districts were using. Uh, we brought those various tools into one of our math team meetings. Um, we discussed them and the, the tool we came up with uh really seems to do a pretty good job of, of looking at a bunch, a, a group of different dimensions of the curriculum. Um, uh, ease of use uh is the uh, how culturally responsive is the curriculum? Um, and, and I know maybe for some people, maybe uh Maybe culturally responsive in math kinda don't sound like they go together, but when you look at, uh. Nature of instruction, when you look at the type of problems that students are asked to solve. You know, i- it, it, it really does start to get into, yeah, is the curriculum equitable? Is it accessible? Um, so that's a dimension it, it looks at as well. Um, it looks at the, uh. Ease of, ease of use by the teacher, ease of, um. Understanding by the students, uh, so it, it looks at, uh. Just a whole variety of dimensions. Um, what we haven't done though is. I, I was noticing this, looking at the, uh. Looking at the instrument, uh. Earlier, actually today, is we haven't sort of assigned, there are like five or six categories. But we haven't assigned a weight to each one, so you know, if, it, it's not like. If, is an excellent in this category carry the same amount of weight as an excellent in this category? So that's really gonna be a topic that we look at on this coming Monday is, uh, how do we, how do we want to approach? Balancing out this tool so that when the teachers are filling them out for the, for Carnegie and illustrative. That, you know. We, we don't wind up with. People at the end of the process still saying, but I think Carnegie is better, I don't care what the score says, you know? You, you be- because of how, how it was weighted, so, um. So we'll, we'll have that wrestling match on Monday and get that sorted out, um, so that. When we wrap up the pilot at the end of April, uh, we're, we're ready to. Finish the job, uh, at our May meeting.
And I know that there are two different units, but I'm wondering where. Where can you or where, where are you thinking of fitting in student assessment? So for example, are you thinking about fitting into your decision, things like this student usually excels in math? Uh, in our old curriculum and in this curriculum, but here they're suddenly falling down. You know, are you looking at those kinds of things, patterns of learning or here it seems like the whole class did better at this? You know, is, is there some way of looking at the data you're collecting on assessment so that you can see if kids are actually learning, you know?
I'll, I'll bring that up on Monday, I, I, you know, I am quite confident that teachers are. Doing forms of assessment, whether it's a quiz or a test at the end, or if it's feedback in class, uh, if it's. Classwork, um, and they're sort of dipsticking, um. How students are doing on, on a day to day basis, but I will bring up, um, you know. How, how are students doing with the material compared to previous years? I think that's a very fair question.
Yeah, and, and sorry, I didn't, I wanna make sure you understand that I don't mean that teachers aren't doing that, I just mean. Yeah, when you're comparing one to the other, you know, it seems like that's a good place to compare, cause that's what, what we're actually going for is to have kids do better. And so are we looking at where our kids actually doing better, you know, because I, I wanna make sure we get. That we want the end goal to be that they're, they're getting the material and it's making sense.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think. One, one thing, one thing that we need to consider too is, um. Illustrative, I'm just gonna talk about briefly, it, it, it's kind of known. That illustrative kinda goes slow and then it goes fast, so in the early parts of, uh. Of a new unit. From the teacher perspective, I've heard from a number of teachers, it can almost feel glacial. Be- because the, the curriculum is really going for a deeper understanding. So in the foundational elements of the unit, it seems to go very slow. But for this, for the students, when you get deeper into the unit, all of a sudden the pace. Really accelerates because they have a deeper grasp, so that's something that I think staff members are sorta. Wrestling with getting their head around almost is like, um. It, it's just a much different pacing than, than they're used to and to a certain extent. Part of the evaluation process is. Will the staff members sort of adjustment or al- it could almost be discomfort with something that's so different. Can they step back and say, and I think they can say, but how did the kids do at the end of the unit?
Right.
Which is, which is really what you're looking at.
Right, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. And then if, whichever one you choose, we're buying everything from K to eight, but just, I'm sorry, from one date, K to eight. But just for one year. Right?
I believe so, um, we're, we're getting the pricing right now.
Okay. Um, thank you for all that and then going back to what you were saying about actually to Mary's point and to, um, to literacy. Um, I think it would be great, I think, I think it's great that we have MAP and I think it's such a. Hard thing to have our only quantity of data to look at, um, when we talk about these things to, being MCAS. Cause MCAS, as you said, is a postmortem and a pretty inaccurate one, I mean, there's a lot of factors I think that people don't think about, like for example. You know, every year I see kids and even my own kids this year, you know, where, you know, you're in taking the MCAS and you're in a room full of kids. And you're the last one and then there's suddenly that pressure to stop, you know, and so things like that affect scores. You know, there's, uh, the reading at the end where it says, you know, the, the report at the end where it says, you know, here's how your students did at things like grammar. But there's like a question or two about that and that's not, you know, it's a, could be, that's a very touch and go about whether, you know, the kids. Got grammar in general, but this is saying that they don't get grammar, for example, so. So I think that I agree with Mary and I hope we will from now on use our MAP. Data and, and, and make that more prominent, cause I think it's gonna be more accurate and it's gonna help us see better how our students are doing with literacy. And, you know, math, and I think as you were saying, it also does cover that, you know, that learning to read and then the reading to learn so that we get the whole picture. Um, yeah, so I, cause I think. Um, cause I think that, you know, every year when MCAS scores are released, I feel like it's like a, a scramble, like, oh, what did we screw up? You know, and how can we do better next year? Um, and, and I think that this is a much better way of looking at, you know, look at the, look at the trends over time. Look at how this class has changed, look at how the third grade has improved, you know, in general, even though the third grade keeps changing every year. Um, so I look, I look forward to having that data, um, at the end of the year and then figuring out some way that that becomes the standard. That, you know, maybe potentially once or twice a year to look at that data together with the school committee.
Yeah, we're, we actually, uh, at the beginning of the year, we, we held back the scores, cause they were. But we, we did send, uh, the MAP scores home to parents after the mid-year. So that they could look at both the achievement and growth data. Um, so we intend to do that at the end of the year as well. So from a parent and student point of view, uh, there, you know, we're not trying to. You know, we're not trying to hide anything here, that, that the score is the score and, uh. With the exception of the very first administration this year. It's our plan to release every set of data from here on out, including next year's first round. Because at that point, for the vast majority of our parents, they will then have four data points at that, at that point. And then a fifth and then a sixth, so, um. That, that is our plan going forward is for this to be out to our parents and to the community as a whole. And, uh, you know, to really almost try to create a culture within the entire school community of, um. You know, how, how do we work on continuous improvement?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I think that it's, it's not just a way to communicate, but it's also a way for us to understand. You know, where we're strong, where we're weak, and then continue to build our goals around those kinds of things too, so. You know, I think, I think that's great too. So yeah, thank you for everything, it sounds great and look forward to the one at the end of the year next time.
Okey dokey.
Um, Chuck, just one more thing, um, I, I actually just, I got to see as a parent that MAPS. Um, for the mid-year and I thought it was fantastic, um, from a parent perspective, it was easy to understand, um. And, and so that's great to hear, that is expected to go out to, to parents, um, or families three times a year. It sounds like that was the plan, um, so that parents can. Get very easy but concrete information of the growth of their, their child through the year. Um, aside from just, you know. You know, progress towards a meeting with teachers, I think that's a really great data element to embed in our, um. Our partnership, our parent, you know, school to home partnership. Um, and then, um, I had a question, this might be more Wayne. Uh, or Brian, just, or it could be you Chuck, a follow up for later, um, when we're talking about. And, and Mauro made me think about it, when we're talking about shifting our, our curriculum. Um, to more of these licenses that we're getting, this is more of a budgetary question, how does that? Look from our, our budget, like where does that land? Does it go to like IT? Or is that still, cause there are licenses, or does that? Go into, stay in a curriculum line, I'm just curious that, because we're seeing so many more licenses. Um, with all of these curriculums that are growing versus more tangible, um, products.
I, I, I'll defer to Wayne in, in just a second, but generally speaking, um. We've kept it in the curricular lines and in many respects, these are our new textbooks. And so we need, the, the one thing that is a concern to me, and it's probably a concern to Wayne and Brian. Is when you purchase a physical textbook. If you're having a lean budget year, I know it's gonna sound not ideal, cause it's not ideal. But if you need to squeeze maybe one more or two more years out of a textbook, uh, than you had originally hoped to. You've got a physical textbook and you can kinda do it, um, it's not ideal, but you can kinda do it. When a license expires, um.
Right, right.
It goes away, so once you get on a cycle. Um, there's no more, we can tweak this for a year or, you know, it, it's, it's, uh.
Pretty hard transition, it's like.
And I, I think over the next few years, you know, that's gonna become the reality in every school district is just like. Man, do we have to think about our curricular allotment every year in a, in a much different way. And that there's a floor number that we're not gonna be able to lower, period, or else. The kids won't have English text next year.
Yeah, and this might be more for budget subcommittee as I'm thinking about it, but I, I think as we're exactly to your point. You know, CKLA, you know, math, a lot of this is, is licensed, you know, based. Um, and growing in large amounts, I, um, Wayne, I saw that you hopped on, I don't know if you had anything that maybe to add.
Um, the curriculum budget was increased significantly for FY twenty five. That was at Brian and Chuck's request. So for twenty five was significantly increased and so. Tentatively that money will stay there. So hopefully they don't have to do this heavy lift every year. And then that money in subsequent years can be used to pay for the types of things that you're talking about.
Okay, so it's not gonna be, so my first question was, it is gonna stay under the curriculum, which I think it makes sense. I just know that we normally don't see a lot of license, you know, that, that's kind of like a, a nuanced approach with. That, so really it's not gonna be, even though it's licensed, it's not gonna be an IT expense, it's really gonna retain under the, the curriculum. Okay, great, that'd be, that's good to know, all right, um, that's all I had, I don't know if anyone else.
I just, I just wanted to say thank you Chuck and please thank all the, the staff that has been.
Yes.
Working on this, similar to the, the literacy, so much work goes into this and we really appreciate it, so please pass that on and yourself included.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, um. So, uh, Chair Report, I only had a few things, some of them I had mentioned already, so I talked about the, the PEG access. It's a, a five year, uh, deal that was, um, voted on at the SLU board meeting the other day with Verizon. So we will continue to fund from April twenty four through April twenty nine. It did give me some thought, Brian, uh, because there's so concern and this might, you know, as we're thinking, um. Budget wise, because PEG access alone doesn't fund WAVM, the, the, the general fund. For the town also has increased the subsidies, if there's, um, if we need to think about in future budgets. Shifting like, like an FTE into our general operating budget and relying less, cause why. Like long term, what I would hate is that we get to that place where we were worried about now, cause we're gonna have two contracts, they're both Comcast and Verizon. Are gonna be up around the same point in five years. And so what I, worst case scenario is we lose both and we have no funding source for, for that. So I don't know if there's strategically, we need to think about, um. You know, should we be shifting over some FTEs into the operating budgets in future, future years? Like maybe one or two, just so that there is no cliff, um, that we would encounter in five years. And then, yes, congratulations, um, about the, the Eagle Scout, that was wonderful, I know that they, this luck board. Um, read the pro- proclamation they had and, um, March thirtieth was declared, um. Uh, a day of celebration and. That was always great to hear, um, and a lot of people apparently attended as well, so that was wonderful. How, how widely celebrated this accomplishment was for her. I also wanted to mention, I know that we had the, the National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony Tuesday night. And Mary and I were able to attend that, it was, uh, it's always a great, great ceremony. Uh, the kids or the families are so excited, this is kind of one of the first more formal, as a, kind of like getting prepared to talk about high school and transitioning. You have the eighth grade, you know, that's there and, um, and they're kind of, you know, they give these wonderful little, um. Little quip descriptive of each, each new inductee, and I always think that's really nice, kinda like passing the baton, so that went really, really great. Um, so, you know, kudos to Ms. Coleman for another, um, wonderful event that she organized. And just in follow up about the SAC meeting that I attended, I thought about this later and I mentioned there, but I thought I'd. Share, considering we had the LPAC presentation the other, the other night. I don't know if the International Night Dinner is because those are so, um. Um, attended by, it's like almost a town event now, like you see people like. Multi grades, multi age siblings are attending that, if that might be an opportunity maybe to do like an LPAC table. In future, um, cause if you're getting a lot of maybe people who are, um, from the community who are coming that are maybe more diverse and their families. They feel like that's already an opportunity to be more welcoming, like their, their food might be celebrated in some way. Maybe that might be a place that LPAC can just kinda have a presence and, um, to see if anyone, if they're happen to be there, you know, just to kinda say who they are. And, you know, kind of getting to Charles's, um, always say like, go where they are, you know, and, and so if they're. If they do have a participation there, because it, it does draw a lot of, um, folks in the community. Um, maybe that might be a good opportunity to, to see an outreach for LPAC. And then just a reminder for, um, the board, June eleventh, this is on our calendar at six thirty, so that is gonna be. Uh, if it's a tri-board or a quad, quad board, I think the CAPSCOM is gonna be, so it's, we're gonna be talking about. And I think, um, like for next year budgeting and capital projects, but also I know Mary and I have been really insistent that. We keep the override conversation that that needs to be part of, like we can't just continue to shift that because it needs to be had. That also wanted to, to kinda get a sense from every, the school committee, um, because I heard a lot this evening. Do we wanna do maybe a school committee letter for town budget? Maybe that just kind of does that, you know. Expressing a, you know, concern however we've kind of talked about, but just informing the, the public or, you know, having that as a handout. To people as we're considering we're voting for FY twenty five, but also. You know, concerns for going into beyond that, so I don't know, Mauro, do you think that would be something you'd be? Interested in participating in, would you do something like that for the school committee?
Sure.
Yeah.
Great.
Mary, Mary, you think so?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
I'd rather get up and talk in front of them, but I think the letter will actually.
I don't wanna side, I, I know, I'm kinda like on the, I don't wanna sidetrack from the other conversation now, nothing. As a resident, I mean, I might myself go up and have my own, you know, give public comments and anyone, anyone can. But I didn't wanna.
Yeah, in the past, I mean, in the past until the recent years, um, school committee always got up and defended the budget or presented it or whatever. So it was only last few years that it's sorta not been quite as, um, part of it, you know, on.
Yeah, so maybe as we get closer, we can think about, but it sounds like, I don't know, Hillary, as a, at a minimum. We, we would wanna do a letter, right, of something that we can at least have as a handout, Elizabeth, is that, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that? Yeah, okay, so as a min- at a minimum, we can maybe work towards that and if there's, if there are other opportunities, like the finance committee. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that. Yeah, okay, so as a minute, at a minimum, we can maybe work towards that. And if there's, if there are other opportunities, like the finance committee might. You know, they're gonna have their hearing coming up on the budget and they might have an opportunity there to include in their comments, you know, just. Some of these things. So I think if it can't, oh, but I don't want it to be only the school committee is saying these, like it really is a town issue and I really want to make sure that. That's where we we comes, it's a town issue that we're faced. And and I I hope other boards are on on that same logic and pathway to. To really support, like this is what we need to do, advocate together.
I think a handout could also be helpful in that. Because there have been comments at prior town meetings about the school finding money. We could in writing sort of address.
Yeah.
What what that actually means. And sort of by like saying, you know, we did this, we did this, but. Here's where we're at now.
Yeah, and I I think that's 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 right because that did come up after, you know, and a lot of it is is uncertain. I mean, and then the budget from the state doesn't really get approved until later, um but. There are um. There are always some changes. Actually, one of the things that the select board just on that note, um they did. Change their free cash recommendation. That um Mary that they moved over that personnel, remember how we we talked about it? Yeah, it seemed like that was something that was doable, so they the the idea of not funding operations through the free cash. I know we've gone back and forth and it, the feedback we provided at at our town budget subcommittee, it it seemed like it's a. Becoming more of the norm as opposed to the exception. And I think that's just an area we're all uncomfortable with is just it's uncertain funding. Especially know now that we know that we're probably gonna get less free cash in future years. As well because um Greg is, you know. Maybe not being as conservative as he's been in the past, recognizing it's it's just slim. Across the board, so um okay, so now that I have. Consent that everybody would like to do something for, I can, you know. Maybe think about that a little bit more and um at a minimum, put a letter together and we can see how maybe at a workshop or something we can um. We can work on that. And that's all I had.
Natasha, I had gotten a note that Mark Sinopoli is back in the meeting himself.
Oh, oh.
So.
Is that that's the real Mark?
It's the real Mark, so yeah, so if you want to.
Oh, yeah, yes, Mark, um I am, we were trying to put you on the spot, but we got Eve earlier. I don't know, Colleen, if you can unmute Mark, um we just wanted to give you an opportunity, one to just really make sure you heard everyone's. Praises and appreciation for the work you're doing um with the the computer science and the. The pathways there, but also if you had anything else that you really wanted to elaborate on. Um and Mary, you you I know you kind of brought this up. I know you've worked, you've been the champion with this so much more. But anything else you wanted to highlight, Mark, about the the pathway and the work that you're you've been doing?
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, thank you for the opportunity to talk. I just wanted to say that, you know, the idea of the innovation pathway, I think started maybe around eight years ago when the state was starting to. Design this plan, um probably to give the regular high school students a chance at vocational type activities. But through the eight years, we've gone from having no computer science in the district to this being the first year where I'm teaching a full load. And while I'm the most visible part of the program. A lot of the um. Parts were already in place from having the capstone program at the high school to having senior project. Um we're starting to implement the uh my cap career and college uh education program. And so when it came time for us to put forth the application. Everything was really in place and it wasn't a whole lot of work, you know, it was a lot of work. And of course, you know, I want to thank Liz York for putting in the submissions of both part A and part B, the application. Uh we sat through an interview process about two weeks ago and they kind of gave us a preview that. We were likely going to be designated and I'm just really, I'm glad of everybody's work and the support of, you know. Chuck and Brian and the school committee, of course, as well, um directly and indirectly, so. That's really just all I want to say is that we have everything in place to to start a really successful innovation pathway program in information. And it's likely going to be um software development, which is what most of our coursework is about.
That's wonderful. Well, you know what, um, thank you for bringing alignment to to that because I think that's really, you know. Having the pieces there is important, but also getting the pieces aligned to making that. A a true pathway, so pre everything that you you're doing and and Liz and it sounds like so many people behind the scenes. Um I know you've been the face of it for so long, so um so thank you. Mary, I don't know if you.
No, I'm just so thrilled. So I was so excited to see that, um that, yeah. My like Mark said himself and just so many people have um just continued to step up and really. Give our 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 kids the the best opportunities that they can. So thank you, Mark, and please pass it on to everybody else, too.
Thank you, I will.
Yes. Okay, um so now we're gonna move on to uh. Uh subcommittee reports. Morrow, I don't know if you, I know we have policy stuff happening, but.
Yep. Uh so we have a um. A policy subcommittee meeting on the sixteenth. So um I know that there are some comments in some of the ones that we're doing for the first reads. Tonight. And so the plan is to still go through this consent agenda and we'll address all of those on the sixteenth. So that's that one. Um I. Went to the jazz concert last night, which was really great. Our, all of our kids did so fantastic, especially like the solos were amazing. And. Um I don't remember his last name, but um Clayton, who is the um, he does both the. Fowler and the high school jazz um. Groups um was just so excited and you could just. The way that he interacts with the the kids, the students are just amazing, so. Um and then the last thing is our outreach. Um I sent. Emails to uh the um three schools. Um principals to get staff um dates. I put. I put the dates in our um. In our spreadsheet. Um the only one that I'm unsure about right now is Green Meadow. Both of the dates that um Karen um gave to me was um they're really full days. Um so I did mention to her about the what we did Natasha last year.
Last year.
Was showing up at the the very last one. And I haven't heard back from her, but the um. The other two um have dates, so I don't know if um. It might be nice if um we could. Maybe have two people. So I do know that some, a couple of them. There's some next week. So um if we wanted to, I know at least when I went last year for the high school. They, one of the teachers had mentioned to me that it would have been nice to have a little more warning. So that they had enough time to formulate some questions. So if. If anybody is planning on going next week, if if you could let me know and I can um let. Liz know. So that they can let all the teachers know. So, and that's all I have.
Great, um. Mary, anything?
Nope, I mean, we had our um budget subcommittee meeting um a few days ago, but the 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 school one, but um. And then the town budget, you had talked about Natasha, the big thing was the peg access, the fact that we're not gonna. You know, have to look at another loss of of one hundred and seventy five thousand or or that, so. There was talk about the the fact that Asavit had um had done their presentation and what the impact of that was, so. And then the the tribe board meeting on June eleventh. Um where there's gonna be the capital planning, presentation, the bleacher design and discussion about a possible um override. So that was basically the summary of that.
Um Elizabeth?
Um, yeah, nothing new since last week.
Okay. All right. Then I think we're all go ahead and move on. To the. Consent agenda, so we have the minutes. And they are, so without objection, we have three sets of minutes. For January twenty fifth. January eleventh. And February eighth, so um that objection, a move that we approve those minutes with edits. Unless anyone. Has any particular. Thing they want to discuss. Okay, so hearing no objection, those minutes are approved with edits. And then um. Warrant, oh, Colleen, you did send this. Oh, here we go. I will go ahead and move that without objection that we accept the approved warrants for. Twenty four zero six one, twenty four zero six two and twenty four zero six three.
And sixty.
Oh. Wait. Nope, hold on, I think I need to go back and. We only have one to accept. Oh, those other ones.
The other one just came in today.
Just came in today. Yeah, okay, never mind, scratch that. So only doing twenty four zero six. Zero without objection that we accept that one, which has already been approved. All right. Okay, and then the next thing um. Uh Mara, I might pivot this one over to you. Okay, all right.
Okay.
Have, yeah, all you.
So without objection, we're doing the first read. On. B section, part of section B, so I'm gonna read those and then. Section E I. And K, I think we also had Js.
Yeah, Js.
Yes.
Yeah.
We have J.
Yeah.
Okay, Js and Ks, okay, so. All right, so first read for Bs, B A A, we have B B A, B B B A. Slash B B B B. B B B C, B C A. B D F A, B D F A dash E, B D G. B E D B. B E E. B H C. B H E. B I A. B I B A. B I D and B J. We have uh section E. E B, E B A B. E B B, E B C, E B C D, E C. E C A, E C A C. E C A F. E D C. E E A. E E A E. E E A E C. E E A G. E E A J. E F C. E F D. E F E. E H A A. E H B. Section I. I B. I C slash I C A. I D. I G A slash I G D. I G B. I H A M. I H A M dash R. I H A M A. I H A M B. I H B A. I H B D. I H B E A. I H B F. I H B G. I H B H. I H B H E. I H C A. I J. I J dash R. I J L. I J L A. I J N D. I J N D B. I J N D C. I J O B. I J O C. I K A B. I K E. I K F. I L D. I M B. I M D. I M G. I M G A. Section J. J B, J B B, J C. J C A, J C, sorry, J E B. J F. J F A B C. J F A B D. J F A B E. J F A B F. J H. J H D. J I. J I C A, J I C C. J I C E. J I C F. J I C F A. J I C F A dash E. J I C F B. J I C H. J I C I. J I C J. J I H. J I I. J J. J J A. J J E, J J F. J J H dash R. J J I B. J J I F. J J I F dash R. J K. J K A A. J L. J L C. J L C A. J L C B. J L C C. J L C D. J Q. J R A. J R D. Section K. Is K A. K B A. K B B A. K B E. K C D. K D B. K D C. K D C B. K D D. K E. K F. K F dash R. K H B. K I. K L J. K L G. K L J. K L K. That's it for the first reads.
Good job. Wow, and so right now we're just, just to clarify, those are just, we're um accepting the first reads.
Yes.
Yeah, just to clarify for the public, anyone's there, we're approving them, we're just accepting the first read.
Right. And now um. This is the second reads, there's a whole section of Bs. All of F, hold on. F. G and. H and L. Oh goodness, and then we have a couple of um. Ones, I think in J and then an I. So let me start with the Bs. Okay, so without objection. The second reads. In section B. We have B A, B B. B B A. B B A A. B B B E. B D A. B D B. B D D. B D E. B D F. B E. B E C. B E D A. B E D D. B E D F. B E D G. B G. B G B. B G C. B G D. B G E. B G F. Uh we have I J O A. J J H. That's all of those and then we have. F. G. H and L.
Sorry.
F. F A, F C B, F F. F F A A. Section. G. G A. G B A, G B E A. G B E B. G B E B C. G B E B D. G B E C. G B E D. G B E E. G B G B. G B G E. G B G F. G B I. G B J. G B K. G C A. G C B A. G C B B. G C B C. G C E. G C F. G C G. Sorry. Having a hard time reading these.
That's a lot.
Want me to pick it up? No, that's okay, I got it. G C I A, G C J, G C K, G C O. G C. Q F. G C R D. G O, I'm sorry. G B A, G D B, G D D, G D. Q. Is that G D O?
Oh.
G D O. This is so bad. Okay, and then. Section H. H A, H B, H F. And then. L. Which is. Section L is LA, LB, LBC, and LDA.
Holy moly. All right, um. That is quite a bit, um. Anything else? So at the next one, just to clarify, next steps. Um, for this process that you guys are working on. We will then be approving, right? We're going to be doing a rescind and approve at the next, the next meeting. Is that where we're?
So the next meeting, the twenty-fifth, we have a list of ones that are, so these ones that we did first reads today. We're going to do second reads the next meeting. And then after we do those second reads, we're then going to do a blanket approval of all of these.
Okay. And we have to do, and we're, and rescind, right? We also have to do.
Yes, and then we also do need to do the rescinds, right?
Okay.
And, um, we might, we have a few that are, we're, um. We'll, we'll, we'll be discussing at our next, um, subcom meeting about recodifying, um, stuff. And I'm not sure whether or not those will be included or not. So. A lot of that stuff is already in the four twenty-five folder. So, um. Yeah, so like A, C, and I think D are already, um, because they've already gone through the first and the second reads.
Yeah.
So they're already, those are already in the four twenty-five folder.
All right.
And then we might just have a couple of stragglers that are like, um, a complete, uh, for example, the WAVM, the chapter seventy-four. Program policy that's currently a number, we would just assign letters, um, but the policy isn't changing.
Okay.
Right.
All right, um. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, I mean.
I guess. Yeah, you've been reading it was a lot of work.
Oh, yes.
I know, I felt like I was drinking.
It was probably a lot of work too.
No, okay, so, um, that's good to know. So we will have some more specific, we'll have two votes on, um. And that will, that won't be a consent agenda, right? Or we, we could.
It will.
Yes. Well, maybe, okay, okay, got it.
It'll just be the second read consent agenda and then the approvals and then the rescinding. So it'll be like three.
Got it. Okay. All right, um, oh, Mary, I wanted to, I forgot to mention, um, your feedback for the FAQs. I, um, passed it along.
Oh, great.
And, um, and they will be incorporating that into a future revision when they do the revision. So, um. So thank you very much for that. And I think that's all we have. So I think, it doesn't say adjourn on my agenda, but I know we are adjourning. Uh, if that's right. So, um, we'll go ahead and make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, Mary?
Yes.
Mauro?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
And Elizabeth?
Yes.
Oh, and Natasha? Yes, all right. We are adjourned.